We always have a word of prayer before our meeting and I've asked Commissioner Brown if he would lead us in this prayer.
Let's pray. Dear my Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for the gift of life, Lord, and bringing us here tonight. Thank you for this great community that we get to call home in Hart County. We just ask you, Lord, that you continue to bless us, Lord. Be with us tonight as we conduct county business. Be with each and one of these commissioners up here tonight and let your will be done through us, Lord, and may we do everything pleasing to you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's all stand for our place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're called to order our Tuesday, August 27th, 2024 meeting. First of all, I'd like to welcome each one here, whether you're here in person or if you're maybe watching on the YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners, or HTC Channel 3. We welcome all of you. First on the agendas to approve agenda, we've got some additions that we need to make. Terrell, if you want.
Yes, if it's okay, like under, like they had under 12F, the intergovernmental agreement between Hart County and the Department of Corrections on the sewer hookup at Whitworth, and the 13D new business authorizing the signatures on the 24 audit engagement letter with the auditors.
And also, we would like to add remarks by any invited guests, committees, authorities, Chairman of the Industrial Bill Authority, Mr. Bill Lear. To...
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. If not, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda as is, as amended?
Give you a motion. Second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Bennett and second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four oh vote. It's turning. All right, now we'll move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. 8:13, 24, a regular meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to those? If not, can we get a motion to adopt those as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four oh vote. All right, the second one is the called meeting of the budget, 8:13, 24. Get a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four oh vote. Next is the called meeting, 7:30, 24. Get a motion to approve those.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, all in favor. It's four oh vote. 7:31, 24, called meeting. Any additions or corrections to those?
Motion approved. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second, we've got Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four oh. All right. Now we come, remarks by invited guests, committees, authorities, and I've asked Chairman of the IBA if he would come forth and report to the commissioners at this time.
Hart County, appreciate y'all letting me come today tonight. Hart County Industrial Bill Authority met the call meeting earlier this evening and voted four zero to recommend Ms. Terry Partain as Hart County Board of Commissioners, to the Hart County Board of Commissioners for the position of Hart County Economic Development Director.
Okay.
It's been a long process and we feel like she's done a great job for us.
All right. Appreciate it, Bill.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go on to reports by the constable officers, department heads. Okay, we'll move on to county administrator's report.
Yeah, I've got the July financial report that we didn't do at the last meeting. For the month of July, the revenue came in at eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand four one. Our expenses was one million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. That's a deficit of three hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two. That leaves us a drawdown of three million, ninety-six thousand, seven hundred, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Our property tax came in, which is normal, at two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Our loss came in at three hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. EMS fees come in at a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and one dollars. And the vehicle, Tabit, came in at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and For the year up to now, we're running about nineteen percent over on revenues and four percent under budget overall. Be glad to answer any questions if anybody's got any.
All right.
With that, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on down to Chairman's report. I would just like to say that Hart County lost a good one this week and it was employed here by the county for thirty-three to thirty-four years. There's, we tried to get that figured out, but anyway, Mr. Ronnie Dickerson, he was a great man. He was kind of one of those guys, it's just, he's laid back, didn't say much to, as a conversationalist, but when he, when he did speak, he was one of those you wanted to listen to because it was something important to say. So I know Commissioner Dorsey and myself attended the funeral in Luana, attended the funeral, where the life celebration Sunday, and Ken and his wife and those at the church, they've done a fabulous job for that service. And I just like to say, keep those folks in your thoughts and prayers at this time. And that's all I have as far as Chairman's report. We'll move on down to District One. Commissioner Bennett.
I'd like to copy Chairman Sayer on that. I knew Mr. Dickerson a long time when I was out of town Saturday, couldn't be there. But keep all of his family in your prayers. And then yesterday afternoon, the, I don't, I don't, I don't understand at this point, we got our work four thirty, my employee went home and called me twenty minutes later and told me he found his wife dead on the floor. And he just tried to call me a minute ago, I hadn't been able to talk to him since last night, but please keep the Williams family in your prayers as well. And other than that, I'd just like to thank everybody that participated in the Ag Center event. There was a lot of people there, just great turnout and just a lot of fun went on out there Saturday before last. And just thank everybody that is a part of Hart County and helps us go with our daily functions from day to day. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, District Two, Commissioner Teasley.
I want to echo what Commissioner Sayer said about Ronnie Dickerson. I worked with him out there when I was at Whitworth for about twenty-five years and we furnished him a lot with details and stuff out there and he was a genuine, good guy to work with and, you know, I hate it for the loss for his family and stuff like that, but he was like a genuinely good guy. I did attend Ag Center thing out there with Brian Fleming and Bran Stone and that bunch in the Form B rave, and I mean, it was a good crowd out there and well represented by, by the community. I think people was out there from all over, but them guys done a good job and Kevin McCraney was out there showing off his drone out there and, you know, just enjoyed going out there and seeing the old tractors and equipment and stuff like that. And I also appreciate our law enforcement, public safety, you know, the city, county, State Patrol, our game ward, I know they had a few drownings on the lake and Brandon and Tim Vickery and no one of them's been busy out there, but I appreciate the job of all our law enforcement and the EMS and Jerry Byram and MB. That's all I got.
All right, District Four, Commissioner Brown.
I'd just like to echo sentiments for the Dickerson family and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. District Five, Commissioner Dorsey.
Couple things, yeah. Ronnie Dickerson was, was a class act. I was fortunate enough to work with him for about twenty-seven, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-four, twenty-three years. Got a lot done in this county as far as road work. When there didn't seem to be a way, there was a will on his part and it happened. As the chairman said, he was a man of few words, but he's kind of like E F Hoot and when, when he talked, people listened. And he, he was a great friend and he'll be significantly missed. I was fortunate enough to stay in touch with him and talk to him probably about six, seven weeks ago. And he was in good spirits and seemed to be doing well. So definitely keep that family in your thoughts and prayers. I know Jim Owens is here in the audience tonight. I don't want to steal his thunder, but Recreation Department has a community pep rally scheduled for September the fifth at six thirty. I know there's been a lot of talk about football and football seasons here upon us and just want to make sure the community is aware of the fact that there is a community pep rally going on. This will precede the opening day of the North Georgia Youth Football League activities that start that following weekend. So everybody's invited to attend. They'll be at the Hart County Recreation Department on Elberton Highway, September the fifth at six thirty and look forward to seeing folks there. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Dorsey, let's catch you up. I don't know if you were here when we amended agenda, but 12F is going to be an intergovernmental agreement with the sewer at Whitworth Center.
Correct.
Then we've added, under new business, 13D, 2024 audit.
Authorized signatures for audit engagement.
So that's, that's where we hit. Okay. We'll move on down to 12A, solar ordinance, second reading. Ms. Kim, did you have any additions or anything that you were looking at with that?
Probably not reading for a second reading. I think we did lower the budget, the whole congregation.
That's right.
But I did send you all over candles, that that's not online, I was able to secure that and sent that out very close to hand zone, which would be helpful in this situation. But they did have some provisions that I liked and it sparked my thinking further. We've been more concerned about light and probably need to redirect some of this ordinance toward farmland preservation. And to that extent, I had a conversation with Shane Hicks. He's going to get us a report together about the large scale farms that are left here. I asked him five hundred acres and I overtook exactly, but I just thought it was a good starting spot along with soil productivity. And so USDA grades our soil one to nine for both agricultural use and for woodland use. And so y'all might want to start thinking on a scale of, or out of that scale of one to nine would be important to you to help preserve. And then I had a few notes that were actually on my packet, but the other thought being, you know, while we're preserving ag land, some of the same thoughts along your subdivision issues, it's not just the solar array that's going to take that farmland, so we don't just need to limit that to them. And so I thought about expanding both until there comes a point of time where we have some zoning. That's going to be our, I think, our way to help protect some of the agricultural. And, you know, we, we probably have a duty to, to look at the importance of renewable energy and just kind of balance that with the resources we have available here and the farmland that remains. So there are some great packets out there on dual use, how you farm underneath a solar farm, grazing, that they're viable for shade for certain crops and that kind of thing. So may want to take some of that into consideration. I printed a bunch of stuff out. I don't know how much y'all want to see or read or y'all want me to just cut and paste the good parts. I'm happy to do that.
Oh.
I do think we're getting some heavy attention and so we need to be very deliberate and considerate for both the landowners here, the property owners that do want to participate, those that don't, along with way, you know, our responsibilities to, to at least consider the importance of renewable energy also.
All right. I would, I mean, like you said, we've been concerned about our budget and everything and I think that's where we need our attention at, at the time. If, could we plan on having a work session maybe October to eight after our budget's done to work on this and plus the RV ordinance? Because these ordinance taking a lot of discussion, a lot of time. Is there any objection to that?
I was just going to look at the, was that Tuesday?
Yeah, it'd be after our regular meeting.
I don't have any objections to that.
You won't both, work on both sides of it?
Right.
The RV ordinance, I don't think is very far from being something viable. I did want you guys to think about, I actually mapped out to scale what an acre would be and what four RVs would look like on an acre and it didn't look like a RV park. So I don't know, you know, what y'all had in mind if we want.
My thoughts on that were to kind of have it like a rural setting where like a campground that you current, like say Paines Creek or whatever, where you've got some space instead of just being, because once the industrial stuff is done, a lot of this RV stuff is probably going to slow down.
So we probably need to get our, our campsite size and spacing more together on that ordinance. But other than that, I think that one is fairly close to being something viable that we can use.
Well, maybe we can finish it up at night on the eights.
Maybe.
I know you're going to, you're going to have, not going to be able to be at one of those nights during the next one.
The twenty-fourth is iffy. I have a, I have a family commitment.
Right, so is anybody, is there an objection, Doctor, about everybody good with that so far? Okay, we'll, we'll plan on a meeting, a work session for those.
That's Tuesday night, regular board meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Be right after that. For that, we'll go ahead and take that 12A and the 12B.
In October to eight.
Yeah, and so we were going to do that at the last meeting, but we was pressed for time to get to the funeral home that night and so, but like I said, we, we need to be focused on the budget right now anyway. All right, then we'll move on to naming IBA director. And you've got in your packet the three finalists that were announced fourteen days ago. And so we'll open the floor up for nomination if we want to go with the IBA's recommendation.
I'm going to make a motion that we accept IBA's recommendation of Terry Partain as Hart County's Economic Development Director.
Okay, we've got a motion back from Commissioner Dorsey and second back from Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five of them, but all right. Now we'll move on to the assistant administrator job description discussion. I know we had taken on a job description, assistant administrator job description and voted on one, but then Commissioner Brown used GMRC to, wanted to look at it a little further and so I'll turn the floor over to you, Commissioner Brown.
It's kind of just came up organically. I was talking with Bill Chafin, who most people know as our private citizen representative with GMRC and we were discussing a number of topics, but one thing that was coming up was, of course, we were looking at updating job descriptions anyways and then, of course, this assistant position which we're seeking out has been, I guess, top of mind topic. And he mentioned to me that apparently GMRC not only does this, but is very efficient at it and, you know, has utilized all of our region when it comes to job descriptions. So I just took it upon myself to reach out, since I am the representative for this board, GMRC, to see what they had to offer. And actually, to my surprise, the executive director, Heather Feldman's her name, she, she took this and ran with it and within twenty-four hours had, had us an updated job description back. I felt like it was worth at least discussing and looking at. One of the concerns that I've heard is, you know, with the current job description, you know, we kind of got a position there that not even our current administrator could qualify for. So I felt like at least be worth us looking at, possibly helping us, we'll get in a better pool or, I mean, better, just, just more candidates, more interest as we move forward. But I thought she did a good job, I think, as well, well put together and worth notating.
Okay. Yeah, I thought it looked great. I mean, it, I don't think, it didn't take anything out of our previous, but then, but it also added some good points, I thought.
That's what I saw. I saw that they didn't change our verbiage a lot. I mean, they moved it around a little bit, but they added a lot of stuff, verbiage as well. And they got more in depth with the software stuff, which we had the software in ours as well, but they was... well, but they was, uh, giving descriptions of it, is what they were doing, and that's a good thing that, you know, that it's descriptive. And I too, I thought it looked pretty good, what they came up with.
There was no cost associated with this either, just so everybody knows. Now, they do charge if you do some more extensive work, but some of the counties and municipalities are really diving deep in a, a full revamp of job descriptions and, and whatnot, and that comes with a fairly decent price tag, but this was, uh, just part of us being there, and she did it pro bono.
And I still like they kept the and/or the bachelor's degree or five years' experience.
Yeah. No, it's not or, it says with. That's what I was fixing to bring up, you basically have significantly added to the requirements here, and that was one of my points of discussion before.
I thought it said or.
That's clarifying, nope, 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 nope.
Let me find it again.
With a minimum of five years professional public sector experience, this is a closely related field, with.
Well, I'm down here, I'm down here where it says minimum qualification, says bachelor's degree in public administration or business administration are closely related field.
With, keep going.
Yeah?
With a minimum of five years' experience.
Well, that's a, that's a bachelor's degree or the experience.
No, it's not what it reads.
I guess I'm missing something.
Says bachelor's degree in public administration or business administration or closely related field with a minimum of five years professional public sector experience that includes public administration, financial management, general management of government departments, or any equivalent combination of education, training, and experience. The way this is worded, you gotta have a bachelor's degree and five years of experience.
Does it is the closely related field is where you gotta have the five years professional?
I'm seeing two ors.
With, with, it says with, guys, that combines. My point here too is you are excluding anybody from the private sector, and there are people from the private sector that can come in here and do a great job. This is all geared toward a bureaucratic person. It, it excludes basically anybody from the private sector, if you read it.
Kim, are you reading those first two lines there? Could you give your interpretation?
Yeah, I'd like to have the description of that.
The way I'm seeing is, is, is the bachelor's degree
Or.
Or business administration, or
With.
A closely related, a closely related field with a minimum of five, so.
And they're in the middle of five years.
So, is it combining all three, or is it just the third? See, I'm seeing the with going to the third point, so there's three, you know, public administration, business administration, and then the third would be a closely related field with a minimum of five years professional.
That could be written there, we probably have to use the red C somewhere, um, so y'all just decide between.
Can you send me colons?
And take the with out of there.
I think you need to have one, two, three be more specifically, uh, separated.
Yeah, you could do a bachelor's degree in public administration or business administration and/or a closely related field with five years minimum experience.
That changes it, that changes, the way it's written now, it's both.
But closely related field.
Right, if you just do the and or.
And then five years, you either have all three of those or five years experience.
Right. If you, if you do the and/or, that will change.
And, and I think it's wrong to exclude anybody from the public, I mean, the private sector.
I agree with you.
I mean, that, that was one of my points of contention when I voted against this before, was the education part, and I just, I mean, it needs to be clarified, because we're talking about an assistant county administrator position here. And I think there's some people out there in the private sector that would come in and do a great job.
No, I wholeheartedly agree, I mean, more than likely, that might be one of our top candidates is public, I mean, uh, private sector.
Private sector, yeah.
Kim, do you see anything in here that, um, prevents or, I guess, suppresses a private citizen from being able to apply for this job if they have applicable experience?
Yeah, I think it's gonna need to be rewritten a little bit, if that's what you want.
Yeah, I think it does.
Just the minimum qualifications?
No, 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 more than that.
I think you can say or any equivalent combination, including private sector. That last sentence, training experience, records acknowledge skills and ability. Maybe after experience, say in the public or private sector.
Say that again, Kim.
Where that last sentence says, or any equivalent combination of education, training, and experience, you can say in public or private sectors, which provides the requisite knowledge skills and ability to apply for this job.
That's what I was about to say, they already have the public in there.
Right, but it exclude, I mean, it says you gotta have, it doesn't.
Well, it's, it's not clear, it can be interpreted either way, the way I see it. You need to just clear the language up.
Pretty clear to me, Mr. Bennett.
You can, you need to be cleared up, I agree.
Do you need Kim to fix it, or?
Oh, yeah, I think you definitely let her mark it up.
I got it.
Yeah.
You got that part. Anything else?
Yeah, there's more, there's a lot more. Um, I'd like to see a org, organizational structure chart of where this position's gonna fit in, who's gonna report where, we've already got department heads asking questions, um, I don't know that this has been addressed, but I think we need to see that, because that goes hand in hand with this, um, and the reason I say that is when you start looking at supervisory controls, um, obviously this person's gonna report to Terrell, it's clear that he's gonna assign the work in terms of department goals and objectives, and it's gonna be reviewed. Uh, the work must be conducted following any applicable state or federal grant requirements. We have in here, they're gonna do annual performance evaluations, uh, the assistant county administrator directly reports to the county administrator, which is really redundant. I think this person needs to be capable of managing people, it doesn't say that in here.
It does have, have the clarification of who he reports to.
It'll report to me, uh, the county administrator. You, but who's gonna report to?
Whichever department is assigned to this.
I understand, but that, we need, I wanna see an org chart that ties all this together. Is it gonna be EMS, is it gonna be all your department heads?
I won't know until I see the person.
I think we're backwards there, Terrell, I think we gotta have the requirements and all, so we go get the person that meets the requirements. I'm not trying to be difficult, I understand that, um, but again, you gotta see, me or whoever's in my position's got to see what qualities they have to know which way they would work out at best in the system.
If you go down to bullet point number five in knowledge and skills, it's, it's pretty clear as far as communication.
What's pretty clear?
Knowledge, skills, and abilities, that's above minimum qualifications up there, bullet point number five, says knowledge of principles, executive management, leadership, and communication with stakeholders, elected officials, department heads, and employees.
Okay. This says nothing about how the reporting structure's gonna be and who's gonna be in charge of what.
Well, I guess that'd be what kinda attitude to have when they get to that department, maybe, I don't know.
I'm just trying to make sure we don't have issues after the fact, that's all I'm trying to do.
Have we got that now?
No, that's why we're adding this position.
Huh?
Do we have that now? We got, it's all under Terrell, but are we gonna put all the department heads under this position, or, I mean, that's what I'm trying to understand, we need to be able to clearly lay that out with a, with an org chart that's tied to the job description. That's the way it works in the private sector.
I don't think any department head should be under him, I think he has to bring his stuff there.
All right, we don't know.
Well, you got Terrell to say.
That should be Terrell's recommendation to us.
Yeah, I agree.
But we don't know, I mean, you.
He's an assistant, I mean, you just.
It could be, it could be done either way.
But to me, if you got an assistant and he's out of the pocket, to me, the assistant oughta be able to take the, take hold and do what needs to be done to keep the county operating, and if he's in, if he's in within his absence.
I'm not arguing.
They'll have to answer to him.
It just needs to be defined in advance, that's what I'm saying, and it's not right now.
Well, then we need to get it defined.
I understand the concept, I really do, uh, but until you get a person see their capabilities, you're not gonna know.
Whether you want to give them a range or not.
Correct, and they maybe, maybe, maybe they work better in, in, for instance, the court system, they may work a lot better there, or they may work better in emergency services.
Well, that's why I said they need to report to you unless.
Well, I mean, they gonna report to me, that's not, that's not what we got in question.
They don't need to be given department heads orders.
Well, yes, we. This is a manager.
Yes, it is.
This is a manager position, absolutely.
I understand, but it needs to go through.
This person should be capable of filling in and running the county when Terrell's not here. Bottom line.
That's a different paragraph.
That's the expectation I have, I don't know if that's what y'all have.
Well, I'm aware of that, but I'm saying that's a different paragraph, but far as being an authority with Terrell here, I don't, I don't think so, that's kinda like telling them in the clerk of court, just make the judge's decision.
Why do you need the position then, Commissioner Bennett?
Cause Terrell's gonna retire one day, he's gonna train, and then he will be cap.
This person needs to be able to run the county in Terrell's absence, if something were to happen to Terrell.
I agree, whether it be sickness, health, or whatever, vacations, one of this person's and.
Under that theory, the organizational chart would look just like it is now, except the assistant would be placed under my slot, directly under me.
Yeah, and that's fine, if that's, but I just wanna see the reporting structure, what all's gonna fall under here, and how's that gonna work, how the constitutional officers work, I mean, there's totally separate.
Constitutional officers don't direct to me, they came in, they come in from the side.
I understand, but that should, are they gonna come through the, assistant county administrator, they're gonna come through to you, all that needs to be defined, that's all I'm trying to say.
All right, I'll, I'll come up with you a chart if that's, if that's what you want.
Are you gonna hand the person a chart, I mean, do you hand everybody a chart that you interview and hire?
We should have an organizational chart right now.
Yeah, we got organizational chart now.
You're adding a position, you're adding a management level position.
That's what I asked, crawling to go, did we have one now?
We never know, we've never had an organizational chart presented to us before when we were working on this.
It's there.
But why all of a sudden we need it now?
Because you're adding a management level.
Well, then why didn't we do it before?
Cause we didn't have one.
But we've already.
This is a new position.
But we've been advertising this position.
I'm just kidding, that's why I said, if the, the last time we talked about this, I said this needs more work, and I was outvoted four to one.
All right, we're redefining a lot of the organizational charts now, on, uh, mainly under the elected officials, constitutional officers, organizational chart, uh, the departments has pretty much got them, county departments, uh, but again, and I, I'll print out and, and plug in this position where I think it ought to be, and we'll go for merit.
Do you expect them to be able to fully manage and run the county day one when you hire this person?
No, 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 no.
Not at all.
Well, I just wanna get that clear, cause that's what was being portrayed, that this person needs to be day one, they need to be able to manage and run the county, that's just what was portrayed.
It's not what I'm saying.
That's just what was portrayed, I just wanna make sure.
My point is, this person should be capable of filling in for him when he's out. It's gonna take a training period, it's not, they're not gonna be able to do this day one.
Do we already have applications for this position?
No.
I think you, what, you have two?
You have two.
None of them qualify.
You what?
None of them qualify based on the requirements.
We don't have a job description approved.
Yeah, you do.
We're doing it again, that's what I'm saying, it was approved, but it's, we're doing it again, that's right.
But, and, I know everybody gave their view what this guy should be, but, um, but no one has mentioned to take some of the daily duties off of Terrell at this time.
Define it in here, that's all that needs to be done.
Well, it is, it says report to the county administrator, as far as I'm concerned, and Terrell will delegate what he needs to do.
Okay.
That's not that complicated, to me, now I may be missing something.
So, show me in here where it says something about working to develop a county budget, that's a key point. Calculating the mortgage rate. We gotta have somebody that can do the financial side too, guys.
Overseas special projects as instructed by the county administrator aboard.
I wouldn't call budget special project, that's required by law.
I think it's defined several times that it just, that this position will add certain follow direction from the county administrator, if they think that they're not gonna have to work on a budget, then I think they're highly mistaken on what position they're actually applying for.
That's why we have to define it, guys.
I think when you get into that, you're just gonna have to take your budget money and double it when you give it to that person.
We're already gonna have to double it with a masters and doctorate and PhD that we need now.
You put it in there, you've got the Georgia Mountains.
I, I strictly remember us having discussion before, and I did not put in
That's what's in there.
Those requirements, um, that would've been you, Commissioner Dorsey.
No, I said a combination of.
We can go back and look at the minutes, I mean.
You can go back and look at the tape, the tape don't lie.
Yeah, it don't.
And I know I'm right, what I said.
Well, you always are. Either way, obviously we need to make the corrections that, uh, Kim seemed fit to make, I think that we need to discuss this at least one more time, Mr. Chairman.
At least.
Yeah, but I will commend the GMRC, uh, on helping on this, I mean, in twenty-four hours, they were able to achieve something that we couldn't achieve in over twelve months, so I do appreciate their, their help and insight on this.
They done a great job, it's us that can't make this.
Lot more efficient, we should've sought them out earlier, honestly.
Uh, there's a couple things that really need to be tweaked here, I do agree with that, that they put in, that first discussion we had, the and ors or whatever.
All right, we'll take no action on that, review it, and we'll look at it at the next meeting. Uh, next item is the, uh, Reed Creek School Road and New Prospect Road Intersection Discussion, Commissioner Dorsey requested this on the agenda, so I'll turn the floor over to him.
Which I know that's in my district.
Yeah, Commissioner Tease has.
And, and I know we've all talked about it.
Wait, what now?
I said this is in my district.
Maybe saying something.
I know, but I wanna say that before he says what he's gonna say, cause we've talked about it in this meeting before, about this intersection up there, and I know it's all about the, the safety up through there, and, um, I think before we put like, if we put a stop sign or anything up there that needs to go, we need to do a traffic study. And I know Mr. Dorsey, Commissioner Dorsey's probably got something on stand.
So, just explain why I put it on the agenda, Frankie, just so you know, I mean, you know why.
Yeah.
We talked, and I told him, I told you I had to talk to Terrell.
Yeah.
And you were busy, and I said I'll take care of putting it on the agenda, that's why it's on there.
Yeah.
It wasn't done behind your back.
I understand that, I'm not.
Is that not right? We talked about it, and you told me to do that.
Yep, yep.
Ain't nobody refusing about nothing, I.
I just, just the way, I don't want nobody to think I'm babbling in their district, cause I don't want anybody babbling in mine.
Everybody's still heated up from the job description.
What's that?
Everybody's still heated up from the job description.
But we've all talked about this.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's been on the agenda three times.
I know.
I mean, all right, now.
I mean, I think for sure is, I think the traffic study for sure's gonna show that we need a stop sign there, but isn't the traffic study gonna be a cover us in a litigation scenario before we just throw stop signs up?
Can you zoom in on the intersection and the business that sits on the.
But I mean, that's, I mean, that's dangerous pulling out there, I mean, people fly up down past that, uh, garage.
I, I don't see a stop sign connected with, you do that.
Only problem is that curve, you can't.
Well, there's a little bit there, I'm, I'm telling you, I've took pictures of this intersection more than once, probably three times, anything to, uh, save a life, I'm for it, I promise you I am, if we need one there, then it needs to be there, but I took a picture, and, uh, I guess it's the people that come there to get their work done on the cars, and, uh, my pictures do express that those cars sitting sixteen, eighteen inches, two foot off of the white line, which is on the, a road right away, if they could correct that, it would, it would be a plus, no doubt, as far as sight distance around through there, you know, pulling it out in front of anybody, but I will go back and say once again, if, uh, could save a life, put stops on there, uh, you know, I'm the first one on this, say, hey, let's do it.
I think what you're gonna have to do, if you're gonna put a three-way stop sign there, you're gonna have to do a PR campaign in advance and start notifying people, just like the DOT's done with these LED stop signs and message boards, letting everybody know the traffic's gonna have to, the pattern's changing, it's gonna require pavement marking and stop bars, and everything will have to be done to the MUTCD manual.
So, would we have to do a traffic study or not?
I don't know that we would.
And they had a stop sign? Three of them.
Three of them.
Well, were you, were you. I don't think we have to do a traffic study.
Only place you may or may not get into something by not doing it is, there's a clause in the law, you can't use a stop sign to control speed.
Speed, but this is, I don't feel like this.
I mean, that would be the only argument point I can think maybe of, a traffic study may.
Isn't that 55 mile an hour road?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Well, it depends on who's driving, could be 85.
They saved me, I've been on that road a lot my whole life.
I mean, I will, I will tell you that the traffic count would come into play there, but I don't know how many it would be.
There's a lot of people living down there, five, four.
A lot more than there was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I'm not sure who would bring up the issue of us slowing people down too much to to raise the issue about not having a traffic study. I mean, I don't, I don't foresee that, but that would be the only thing that I'd say traffic covered, maybe this traffic study may cover you on, it's just that simple clause in the law.
I'm going to make a motion to have our county administrator reach out to GDOT and just see if they would make a recommendation to this intersection, tell them what we want, we'd like to see a three-way stop, and let them make recommendations of what we need to do here.
I'll give you a second.
Let's move forward with it after we get those recommendations.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey. To get authorized here, county administrator to get in touch with GDOT to proceed with a three-way stop, is that basically?
Call Jason Docks.
And that would fall back on them, obviously, we got their recommendation versus doing traffic study.
If they accept, they got to accept to look at it first.
We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Bennett, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five o'clock. Next is the intergovernmental agreement for the sewer at the jail.
Yeah, this is an agreement we've worked on, how long, Kim? Two years. We finally got everything beat out and everybody in agreement. It's not in your package, I got it on the table back here, but it's something that we've beat out and agreed on for over a year at least. It just took that long to get everything in writing and ready for everybody to sign, and we just received it this week, so. Question is, do authorize the chairman to sign it? There's no dollars other than paying for the electricity that we use.
So we didn't have to pay on the, for, lift station didn't come into play here? A bigger lift station?
No, 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 uh-uh. We will, our monetary commitment is splitting the maintenance costs from this, based based on usage.
That's fair enough.
And and covering the electricity at so much, so many cents per thousands a gallon, so, and that's taking off the water meters, so that that's the only monetary stuff that's involved in this.
I might commission to let Commissioner Sayer sign the agreement with the Department of Corrections.
Second.
Got a motion back from Mr. Teasley, second back from Mr. Brown, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five o'clock. All right, then we'll move on to new business, a VITA transit agreement.
Yeah, this is a yearly agreement we sign with between transit and the VITA every year to transport their patients. None of the dollar figures has changed on it in the last six, eight years, I know, but it's just it's for their, this year's budget that started in January.
Motion approved, January. Second.
Okay, we got a motion back from Mr. Bennett, second back from Mr. Brown, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five o'clock. All right, now we'll move on to credit for experience from Recreation.
Yeah, Jim's hired a new person at Recreation Department, and wants to give him credit for eight years' experience. This isn't a normal thing we do when you hire with experience.
I might motion to approve this request.
I thought it was four years.
Interject something, because he was tied up 10, 4, 20, 23. You all going to go retro?
Oh, that's right.
No, I do not want to go retro.
It would be from today.
Don't worry, no retro, we're getting a next paper here.
Okay, your motion approved.
Commissioner Tease has made a motion.
I made a motion.
Okay, who's saying?
I'll give you a second.
Okay, Commissioner Tease has made a motion, second by Commissioner Brown, any other discussion? If not, we'll call.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Why was this not brought up in 2023?
I kind of had the same question, to be honest.
Come on up.
I saw the paperwork where you said he had all his experience on the company, et cetera, so forth, and it was.
He did.
Experienced in the position you brought him into.
Yep, I wanted to make sure he could do the job.
Okay.
I don't want to give somebody's money for something they have on paper, I want to see what they can do first, and he has proved himself, and that's why I'm coming now to ask for that.
That's what your probationary period's for.
Things have changed since his probationary period. We have all new staff now.
I just don't think it's fair to him.
I mean, if y'all want to give him retro, that's fine for me.
I mean, I don't think we can.
But I didn't.
Another fiscal year. Well, it would be, that would still be the same one.
We've done it for other people, haven't we, retroactive?
Yeah, but not for the length of time.
But he hasn't requested retro, he just requested a next paper.
That'd be 10 months back.
Yeah, and I don't, I'd prefer not to do that unless y'all just want to do that, and I'm sure he'd like that, but like I said, I wanted to make sure he could do the job that I want him to do.
I remember when you hired.
Yeah. He's done a great job over these months. We got into the the season, this, the past three months, four months, where he has proven himself as far as doing the job that I I want him to do, and I'd like to reward him with this for his experience.
So you want to add four more years to his credit?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, we had a motion, we had a motion, second, any other discussion?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, where are you, where are you getting the four more years?
No, it's eight years.
Well, right here in the paperwork, it says credit for four more years.
Hmm, where?
That's what my paperwork says.
I don't.
Four years of experience. I went back to look at it when it said eight, and it very clearly says four.
Did I type four?
Yep, there's four, and four in mine, may not be in the rest.
Mine says eight.
Mine says four, and that's a mistake on my part, it's eight years.
Mine says eight.
In my note, I think, my note got four.
You trying to mess me up there?
Well, I'm going to be messed up, so everybody else may be messed up too, but I did type four, that's a typo on my part.
Yeah, I actually, I went back and looked, and somebody said eight, I said I read four when I read this.
That's why I put, that's why I always put their original request in here, so I can't mess it up.
No, you got a first and a second.
I thought it was eight years of experience, but four years.
Well, that's true, and I said add four.
I put the four as a typo on my part. Do what?
So what, what was asked for, four or eight?
Eight.
Eight, right?
Eight, right, correct. I typed in four instead of eight, that's why I always put their original request in here, so they can catch my mistakes.
Cut his money, went.
All right, well, all that clarified now, you still hold on to your motion?
I do.
Okay, you still hold on to your second?
Yeah.
Okay, we got a motion to second, and it was not retro, eight. Everybody clear, okay. Now we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five o'clock. All right, next we have is the policy for.
Background checks.
Background checks.
For for volunteers, or coaches, and officials that direct it forward.
There were some discrepancies, interpretations, I think, that were, and I think Kim has helped them with this, am I correct, Kim?
I did, I didn't see the final product, that Terry left yellow lines and say any of the offenses A through C. Is it a B? You see that here?
That says A through D.
My handwriting was pretty bad, I handwrote this out, stained it up.
So.
It says A through D.
Yeah, it should say A through C.
Okay.
But what, what timeframe are we starting now? Is a five-year male eligible to, and what date?
The date, the date we run.
The date of the application or the date of the.
They don't, the date we run the history.
It would be the date of the offense, I would say, I mean, you can't.
No, no, your five year starts the day we take the application and run the history, anything, back five years is what we'll look at. Yet again, there was some, some, that last sentence on the original was not clear, so that they just clarified that last sentence is all they done.
So clear me, if somebody's already been been four and a half years, and they put in the application, they still got to wait five more years?
No, no, no.
They got to wait half a year.
They got to wait till they five.
Well, that's what I said to begin with, be the date of their offense, and they get cleared up, they would have to be clear of all offenses.
Yeah, we wouldn't know they had offenses until we.
Then you run the history.
Right.
Yeah.
And we don't run the history without their permission.
So we're working on their history, not not our application.
Correct.
Give them that.
We look at the printout we get that day, is where we're going from.
Kim, are we correct, is A through C?
C.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, let's make a correction then. All right. Need a motion to adopt this amended.
Well, those corrections by the county attorney give you a motion to approve.
So who's who's going to make this correction, is that going to be Jim?
No.
Okay.
Second.
We got a motion back from Mr. Brown, second back from Mr. Bennett, any discussion?
Yeah, I got one more question. So the advisory board, I assume, voted on this?
Correct.
Okay, did they vote on A through D, or they vote on A through C?
They had a typo on my ear.
Okay, that's good, I'll need to know, good enough. I just want to make sure we don't have confusion later on, is what I'm asking.
And B's not in the fence.
No, B's in another state.
I was just reading what was stated here.
Yeah, B's just the statement showed A through C, but that.
That's good, yes. Okay, no problem.
All right, we'll call, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five o'clock. All right, now we'll move on to 2024 audit signature.
Correct, it's time to engage the auditors again for this upcoming audit. We used to do it always this time of year, it's basically authorized on the chairman inside for the board, and me to sign this management for the engagement letter for them to get started.
Motion to approve engagement letter for the chairman to sign, the auditors.
I'll second, just so everybody knows, it's for Birch and Croons, which is a local firm here.
Right.
I said, just so everybody knows.
Right, it's Birch and Croons, right, the same auditors we've used for the last several years.
All right, we got a motion back from Mr. Bennett, second back from Mr. Dorsey, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five o'clock. All right, now we come to public comment, or is there anyone here that would like to come to the podium and speak on a problem or an issue you may have with the county? Not the county commissioners, but the county. I know we probably give a lot of folks a lot of problems, but, you know, we try our best. Anybody want a public comment? If not, can we get a motion to exit into executive session for litigation? So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown.
Your second.
All in favor, it's five o'clock. All right, thank you for being here tonight.
All right, thank you for being here tonight.